Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for September 23rd, 2025. The time is seven o'clock. And I'd like for you to silence your cellphones if you have them. And Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Fink.
Here.
Trustee Hike.
Yes.
Trustee Rice.
Present.
Trustee Webber.
Here.
Trustee Roll.
Here.
Here.
And trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, equal to all, with liberty and justice for So, trustees, you have before you a proposed agenda for this evening's meeting. Does anyone have any changes that need to be made to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Rosson or?
No.
Hike and Swisher. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the motion passes and the agenda is adopted. And then you have also the consent agenda, which includes minutes of our last meeting, as well as minutes from the beautification advisory board and reports from the town administrator, treasurer, airport manager, and recreation director. And then also, there is an adoption of Resolution Number 64, Series 2025, dealing with the renewal of the retail marijuana store license for PCG1 LLC doing business as Forage Buena Vista. Does anybody have anything from the consent agenda that they'd like to pull out for further discussion?
I have a question on the renewal license in our packet. It said that Chief Morgan was doing backgrounds checks. Did those come out okay, or?
Oh, first I remember, Paula, I did background checks recently. That was for a sin.
That was for a sin, and the ones we've been following up with you on, you're in the process of renewing.
So, for Forage, yeah, we've got that today. So, we, all the names that are given to us, we run the background checks on.
Okay.
And what we'll do, Cindy, is we'll hold that license until the people gives us that information.
That's all I needed to know.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Devin, do you have anything? Okay.
I have one comment. Thanks to Brian's administrator report, there's a number of just items we've talked about here in our meetings that you've followed up on and given us an update on. So, just, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Move we adopt the consent agenda.
A second.
So, we have Rice and Swisher, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is adopted. Paula's bringing in a clipboard. And if you'd like to speak at public comment, you should sign your name on this clipboard when you come in the door and to the community center. So, list of six people who would like to speak. And you can come to the podium, as I call your name, give your name, and then just say whether or not you live within the town limit of Buena Vista. So, you'll have three minutes. And I have a timer here, so I'd like to have everybody actually stick to the three minutes. But George Smith is our first speaker.
Good evening. I'm George Smith. I am a resident of Buena Vista. And I think that I would like the trustees to address, if they can, regarding the recent ICE Sheriff's Office accident that happened in Salida. I recognize the amount of conversation in the community about that event. I recognize and accept the need for police and policing generally. I personally do not support ICE tactics or the agencies that provide support or assist ICE or adopt like behaviors. The psychological makeup of people adopting and supporting such behaviors is clear. There's people that have adopted the tactics of the terrorists of my youth in the 60s and 70s. And it's also the tactics of the countries that these people flee, that behavior is more intimate. And for me, it's not about whether or not the sheriff's office acted within the law. It's a matter of whether or not the sheriff acted in the best interest and with good faith representing and executing the interests of the citizens of JP County. With policing requires judgment and discretion. I could easily see that perhaps ICE could leave with whom they come for and left others behind. Quite obviously, no attention was paid to a child's welfare by a mandatory reporter. I'd like to draw attention to the sheriff's lengthy Facebook post of 9/11, in which he attempts to whitewash his actions and bull smoke over the truth. It wasn't transparency, it was obfuscation. I've seen the body cams. I have been parties to conversations with witnesses. Characterizing a resident who doesn't stop for an unidentified car and goes to a building filled with police officers and officers of the court for help, characterizing that as fleeing and eluding or supporting such a contention is laughable, or would be laughable if it didn't have the soul-crushing and life-altering results it did. There was no cause, probable or otherwise, to remove that good family from our community. The sheriff needs to go. Clear, I view myself as a conservative. I support the Second Amendment. I am not a Democrat. I am not a Republican. I am unaffiliated. Furthermore, I did not spend four years in the Marine Corps and a further 10 years in federal service with the VA to see public servants act, any local, state, or federal level act like that. I am disgusted that this occurred in my community. I do understand that it's not going into business what happened in Salida, right? Get that. I believe that the trustees should make this an agenda item for discussion in the community, so residents of Buena Vista can come here, express our support or our concerns and what our expectations are. It's clear to me that we can reasonably expect similar incidents in the future, including here in Buena Vista. We should have this conversation on the front side, so we can understand what the community wants and the community understands what we can expect from the trustees or our local police. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Now, we have Jessica Curtis. Evening.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Curtis. I'm not currently a resident of the town, but I hope to be in the future. Nate and I are here tonight formally requesting that this board authorize town staff to issue short-term rental licenses to those of us who are on the waitlist. We believe that we're now eligible and entitled to issuance of a license based on Section 6129B of the municipal code. I can elaborate on why we feel Section 6129 requires issuances of the license if requested, but will spend my time addressing why issuance is beneficial. As we have the impression that the town and legal team understand our position, we've not been told that there's any disagreement with our interpretation of what's required. In terms of benefits, first, allowing town staff to issue the licenses doesn't require any change to Ordinance 9. We have other reasons that we believe Ordinance 9 should be repealed, which we've brought to your attention. But our issue tonight, this specific issue regarding what Section 6129 requires, doesn't require any change to Ordinance 9. The cap that will be established if Ordinance 9 takes effect can be maintained. If more licenses have been issued than the cap establishes when the ordinance goes into effect, licenses will drop off naturally through attrition and non-renewal, and the cap can be maintained. This has occurred in other communities. Second, allowing staff to comply with the municipal code and issue the licenses that are required will allow those of us who have a negative perception of the policymaking process behind Ordinance 9 to feel a bit better, that the town is making a good faith effort to comply with the law on this narrow issue. Finally, issuance of the licenses stops Nate and I's challenge to Ordinance 9, which I think benefits the town. We don't want to start out our relationship with this town in a fight. Although we still deeply feel that Ordinance 9 should be repealed based on the issues that we've identified in our correspondence to you, if we receive a license pursuant to the current code requirements, we will no longer have grounds to continue our challenge of Ordinance 9 in this or other forums. Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next speaker is Orin Legree.
Good evening. My name is Orin Legree. I live on the north end of Buena Vista, not inside the town limit.
Thank you.
I'm the owner of Legree's Food Stores. In my limited time tonight, I would like to make a couple of concerns, hopefully to cause pause or create additional conversation. I've been an independent grocer for over 40 years. At that time, I have watched the big box stores sterilize communities all over the state and all over the country. Kroger reported a $4.7 billion profit in fiscal year 2024. The new Kroger location will hurt, or possibly close competing businesses, including my own. You may or may not have had thought or asked, why now, after all these years? Some part of that is that they have changed their pricing zone strategy, did a small remodel, harassed and head-hutted my own employees while they were at work, and we are currently still here. Why now, they decided to sterilize this community? If they had no competition as they had for years, would we even be talking about it? They are, they are going to have a dramatic, in my opinion, negative impact on Buena Vista. And now, if I'm hearing correctly, they are asking the citizens of BV to pay for infrastructure with the sales tax dollars for the next 10 years, because Kroger feels it's just too expensive to do it on their own. Just one-year profit line, $4.7 billion in 2024. My question regarding this is, the police department, is the police department okay with cutting shifts, reducing staff? Is the fire department okay with no new equipment or relying on neighboring cities or counties? Are the citizens you serve okay with less services in general? What has Kroger's $4.7 billion profit done for Buena Vista? Is it worth empty storefronts, business fronts, higher prices? Because they will take that higher price zone to maintain that profit line, especially if they eliminate competition. Is it worth less services, less variety, and less vitality in general? The bigger question is, can you afford to lose all those dollars as a community? And have you thought far enough down the road to possibly that if I decide BV is no longer viable, a viable location for my business, my great customers in the community have to go back to City Market? You will be giving them a percentage of the tax dollars that I collect at a reduced rate. This is, this is tough.
Please finish your.
Sorry, I'm done. This is tough, because I assume some of you have stars in your eyes thinking that the largest grocery store retailer in the country is interested in you. Let me reassure you, the only thing this large corporation is interested in is your money. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. The next speaker is Scott Simmons.
Scott Simmons, I live in the town. I'm going to make some comments on City Market. Board, mayor, town staff, you guys are tackling some pretty big issues recently. Yes, the grocery stores, zoning ordinances, SDRs, there's a lot on your plate. And I guess at this time, I just urge you to be solutions-oriented, moving forward deliberately with as much information and facts as you can, not really deciding these big decisions on opinion or gut or emotion, but bringing in experts in these areas. And it might be outside this room, to get the facts right and decide on those facts. In regards to the City Market, you know, I've heard for years, ever since I moved here, complaints about the City Market, how dangerous the parking lot is, how the aisles in there, how inventory never keeps up with demand, and it's too busy during the summers. I feel like City Market is like second on the complaint list to the post office here. But you hear it all the time, that the grocer that we have is not adequate for the needs of our community. And now, we have a proposal from a major chain with the opportunity to have that new store. You know, what it takes to secure that commitment has received various sentiments from the public, as we just heard. And, you know, that's specifically about the sales tax and the incremental increase in giving that back. That's been, a lot of the hangup has been on this, how the sales tax split works. But I would say, don't we sight of the desire of a lot of people in this community to have a grocery store that meets our needs? Don't we sight of that in this? This is a time, I would say, to work towards a solution with Kroger, if there is one there. Work towards a solution. This is a negotiation. It needs to be based on these facts and not speculation. You know, City Market's been part of our community for paying taxes for decades. They're going to be, if the store goes through, they'll be paying taxes in our community for 30 to 40-plus more years. So, come and be creative, be smart. This is the largest commercial project in our town so far. And I can guarantee you, it'll fuel more commercial investment around that grocery store. So, there will be more commercial local businesses that will, will be attributed to a grocery store coming into that area. So, really, there is some of this investment into City Market will actually benefit local businesses, too. BV is not the cheapest or easiest place to develop anything, real estate, housing, whatever. We all know it's a hard market. It's isolated. There are plenty of other markets that are cheaper, easier, and more profitable for Kroger. So, you know, Kroger could easily just go to another market if you shut them down. They can move on. So, I would urge you, lastly, don't play chicken with City Market to see if you can figure out a deal. Be smart and be wise and.
Then we have Matthew. What's your last name, Matthew?
Willby.
Willby.
Hi.
You, Willby.
So, my name is Matthew Willby. I'm a resident of Buena Vista despite having this accent. I decided to come today, I have a short, I have a property management company here in BV that services BV and the wider Chaffey County area. And I decided to come on behalf of one of my clients that can't be here today, David Welch. She purchased a house in May on Baylor Drive, very quickly, within a week or two, put in his application for a short-term property rental license. And he's been on that list since May, end of May. And the new rules and regulations that have changed massively impact him. He is a person who bought, he lives within Colorado, he lives out of, he lives outside of BV. He, long-term, wants to live here and invest in this community, continue to invest. But during the time from May till August, when these new changes were put into place, he spent around $20,000 on renovations, furnishings, et cetera. And it feels quite punitive to not allow the people that were already on the list within good faith of the rules and regulations that BV had decided to put up. And then to have this change feels quite punitive. And so, I'm just here to advocate for David and his property and the realization of him wanting to invest in this town, and just to ask that the people that were on the list before these rules changed be considered to be granted a license once the list gets to a point where you are issuing new licenses rather than punitively just putting these rules in place, that he has to wait for an extra two years on top of purchasing the house and doing the $20,000 in renovations and furnishes. So, any questions? All right, thank you.
And the last person who has signed up is Jack Jones.
Mayor Board, good evening. My name is Jack Jones. I live in City Mountains. Tonight, I wanted to make several comments relating to the Board's ongoing efforts to address affordable housing issues in Buena Vista. While I applaud this Board's efforts to make policy decisions in line with your focus on affordable housing, I did want to offer some thoughts as it relates to what impact things like short-term rental regulations or inclusionary zoning policies will actually have on affordable housing supply in Buena Vista. To start, I think it's important to understand the affordability gap that exists in the day. A three-bedroom home for a family making about 100% of the area median income in Chaffey County, or a little over $100,000 a year, would need to be priced at around $415,000 to be affordable to that family today. Currently, the vertical construction costs alone will likely be at least this amount. $300 a square foot gets you builder-grade finishes in BV currently, certainly nothing custom, meaning a 1,500-square-foot home would cost you about $450,000 to build. Then we look at land cost. A pad-ready lot in town starts at around $150,000 in BV, and that number is significantly higher if you want to be within walking distance of downtown or East Main Street. After you add in soft costs like permit fees, financing costs, sales commissions, and a modest profit for a builder or developer, that 1,500-square-foot home is easily $750,000 to build, or about $335,000 higher than the average household here can afford. So, with that backdrop, I want to be clear that there's no change to zoning or short-term rental regulation that will have a substantial impact on a gap of this magnitude. If the town is serious about wanting more affordable housing in BV, I would encourage you to build on the success of recent projects, projects like the Midland Apartments or the affordable units being built at the crossing. Making a project financially viable candidly gets us most of the way there. So, partner with developers to bring additional state subsidy dollars to projects. Look at creative ways to contribute land for affordable housing projects. Offer things like density bonuses or reduced parking requirements for affordable projects. However, simply trying to mandate more affordable housing without making it viable for someone to actually create that housing is a deeply unserious policy solution to a very serious market problem. So, as the Board considers some important topics for future decisions on housing affordability and related items, I would ask you to be thoughtful about what these changes are actually working to achieve. Restricting short-term rentals on South Main or Main Street is not suddenly going to make it viable for someone to build affordable housing in these areas, nor will an inclusionary zoning policy, if not paired with appropriate incentives. Rather, we should collectively be focused on realistic ways to actually encourage the development and preservation of affordable housing units, rather than assuming that putting more restrictions and requirements on builders, developers, or business owners will solve this problem for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
One online.
One online.
Julian Petrasch.
Go ahead, Julian.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, my name is Julian Petrasch, one of the owners of 760 East Pine Street. I want to thank you for the work you're putting into the complex issues you're dealing with with Ordinance Number 9 and just affordable housing in general. I respect the effort to balance community needs and responsible short-term rentals. I'm here to ask for one action, and that is to issue short-term rental permits to those who are on the waitlist before Ordinance 9 takes effect. We've invested significant time and money under the current regulations and have met every requirement in place today. Other mountain communities have faced this exact transition. Summit County, for example, has far more permits issued than their caps allow, because they had to honor regulations in place while they were transitioning to new regulations and caps as well. The same approach seems to fit Buena Vista. I don't think you even need to change the 119 permit cap or rewrite Ordinance Number 9. You can simply honor the applications already on the waitlist. Now that the housing stock has been recounted according to your website, there should be 128 permits available if basing the count on current regulations. Last I heard, there were eight on the waitlist, so if those eight were issued permits, there would temporarily be 127 total permits issued. I think this number would dwindle quickly with normal attrition from people selling their properties or deciding to no longer short-term rent. A healthy short-term rental market supports jobs and brings visitors who spend money in our restaurants and stores. Our success as owners of a short-term rental is tied to a thriving and beautiful town. Please approve the staff to issue our short-term rental permits before the ordinance takes effect. It's a precedent-backed way to manage this sort of messy middle that we seem to find ourselves in. Thank you for your time and for safeguarding our community and the integrity of Buena Vista's processes.
Thank you. Excuse me. Anybody else?
Four online.
Okay.
Willby, can I go get you water or something?
Oh, no, God, thank you. And I conclude with my comment. Now, we have a public hearing. I'd like to call the hearing to order. Open the hearing.
All right. Good evening, trustees, member of the public. My name is Marika Kopp, and I am the planning director here for town. And this evening, we will be discussing a proposed rezone for a portion of 318 West Arkansas Street and 435 North Pleasant. The agenda this evening will start with my presentation, and then I will hand it over to the applicant. This is a public hearing, so there will be an opportunity for public comment. Following the public comment, the Board will have an opportunity to ask questions, either on behalf of themselves or the public, and then board discussion and vote will occur. To the left there, you see a zoning map, and I've highlighted the property and that red dash line, the two properties in question. And then, in the red highlighted area, is actually the proposed portion of the rezone. So, again, this is just a portion of each property rather than the full property. And what you're seeing is that there is a proposed land swap between the two properties. And so, because you can't have a property that has two zoning districts and they're swapping land, they've got to bring the land that's coming to them and rezone it so it matches their existing zone district. And the proposed rezone follows Cottonwood Creek. And so, everything that would be south of Cottonwood Creek would be zoned R1 Old Town, and then everything that's north of Cottonwood Creek would be zoned to R2. And again, that's to be consistent with the properties in which they're going to, so that all the zoning can be consistent. The purpose of this evening's meeting is to hold a public meeting, provide an opportunity for public comment, and for the Board to review and. and for the board to review and make a decision on the rezone request based on the findings within the code. Um, just looking at a high level, the property is just south of the post office into the northwest of McPhelony Park there on that vicinity map. So a quick summary of the two properties, three eighteen Arkansas is just under a quarter of an acre while four thirty-five North Pleasant is one point two three acres. The area that we're talking about is proposed to be rezoned is just point one one five acres. On each of these lots, there are existing single-family structures as well as the standard accessory residential structures that you would expect to see sheds and things like that, fencing. Um, and the applicant is seeking a rezone to allow for the land swap between both properties. And so in this street view that you've got here, on the right side of the screen is three eighteen Arkansas and then on the left side of the screen is four thirty-five uh North Pleasant and they're split right now by Cottonwood uh Creek. Currently, some of three eighteen Arkansas's land stretches north of the creek and then a larger portion of four thirty-five North Pleasant is south of the creek. And so uh we have heard that maintenance and things like that are an issue, especially for four thirty-five North Pleasant. The code defines these criteria here for approval of the rezone. I provided an analysis of these criteria within my staff report. Um, but staff was able to find that all of the required criteria had been met. Specifically, number one, um, we only need to meet one of the A through D criteria, but we meet both A and B. Um, really, this is an opportunity for more orderly land development, having properties that are zoned kind of consistent with geographical features and geological features. Um, makes a lot of sense from a zoning perspective, certainly from a maintenance perspective. Um, and because the two zone districts are so similar, we're not introducing an opportunity for com- combating uses, you know, we're not introducing new commercial type development. These uses in these zone districts are very, very similar. Um, and our comprehensive plan calls on the planning department in the town to support infill development and orderly infill development, and so this furthers that objective. And then we also meet finding two and three, and I'd be happy to go into that in more detail if there are any questions beyond what's in my staff report. Staff did have a required um condition though, where if the rezone is approved, it shall be contingent upon successful completion of a minor subdivision application so that we are aligning the property boundaries with the zoning boundaries. In other words, the property that these owners are acquiring needs to be replotted, so it's all one property. Um, and then once it's whole properties, we can rezone that. If that's not completed within a year of the of the approval, the decision would be void. Um, at Planning and Zoning Commission last Wednesday, we did have um five members of the public speak, really asking questions about um what could occur if this was to be rezoned, what the property owner's intention was, if there was development proposed. Um, this also falls within a flood plan and floodway, so there were some questions about that as well, which I highlighted within my staff report. Um, ultimately, obviously, development is a separate request from the rezoning, which is before you this evening, but I can assure the board and members of the public that if development is proposed anywhere within a flood plan or floodway, we review it with the highest level of scrutiny, using our uh external engineering firm to ensure that we are not per- or accepting um development to occur in an unsafe space. Uh, that if this board and development is proposed, that would be looked at through a floodplain development permit. Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend unanimous approval with that recommended staff condition attached to their approval. And that's it for me. So if there are no clarifying questions at this point, I will go ahead and pass it over to the applicant so they may give their presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees, Staff. Uh, my name is Joseph Typho. I am here not as the owner, but as a representative of the owners. Their names are Stefan and Galla Lagmar. Uh, they've owned three eighteen West Arkansas for about ten years and have a desire that started this whole process to build a home next to the creek or near the creek. Um, as you saw from Marika's presentation and as my presentation will less clamorously uh display, um, that is a weird-shaped property, three eighteen West Arkansas extends has an Arkansas property address and it extends northward along Pleasant Avenue towards the creek and a portion of it extends beyond the creek. Um, so the Lagmarcks have worked with their neighbors, Colleen Wheelock, to organize a property transfer. A portion of the Wheelock property, which is currently landlocked south of the creek, currently has no access from any street, um, would go to the Lagmarcks. And Lagmarcks would transfer a portion of their property, which belongs to them but is undevelopable. It's essentially part of the creek to the Wheelocks. And that would essentially clean up what Marika was referring to as as aligning with geologic features. In order for that property transfer to happen, the each property would have to entirely be zoned the same zone and district. And that's what brings us before you tonight. Um, so a little context map and some pictures as as Marika's presentation also shared with you. Um, you can keep going, Brian, thank you. So this slide, I think, is really important. Um, as I mentioned, the Lagmarcks would like to build a home. Currently, you are not considering a development permit before you, you're considering a rezone. However, I think the context is really important. Um, as Marika mentioned, the Lagmarcks do not want to change the character of the neighborhood. The neighborhood is single-family homes. Um, R one and R two are the zone districts. And what they're proposing or what they would like to see happen is one additional single-family home on what would be a new lot should the minor subdivision that's currently under review go forward. Um, in order for that minor subdivision to be finished, the rezone would have to be approved, as is uh before you tonight. Um, so that that display shows you what could be proposed as a as a home. A quick note on that, should a home be proposed, it would not only need to achieve building permit review, but also have to go through a floodplain development permit process. As Marika mentioned, um, a floodplain and floodway do touch the property and therefore we need to prove um that a development of a home impacts that floodplain or floodway. And that's part of that floodplain development permit. So it's a future process that we would have to go through and are more than happy to do so, um, should we pass this particular milestone. Um, the the majority of the property that's under question, the larger portion of property, which is that portion south of Cottonwood Creek is currently R two and we're asking for that to actually be downzoned, um, I would call it from R two to R one, Old Town. Um, there is a small portion, as as we all mentioned, that is essentially on the creek that would go from R one to R two and to align the property boundaries with zone districts. So in our view as the applicant, the request does not um does not carry any risk of increasing uh out-of-character development with the zone district that we're that we're requesting. As Marika already mentioned, again, her presentation was much more refined than mine. Um, but there are various criteria in the code that you all need to consider when you make this decision. Um, these first four is a menu. We only need to comply with one. However, both staff and myself feel like we comply with both A and B. Um, the second two, we need to comply with both, and again, we agree with staff that we comply with both. I'm here and more than happy to answer questions on behalf of the applicant, should you happen. And I very much thank you for your time and consideration.
Does anyone have any questions for our staff or Joseph?
I have one.
Yes, Chris.
I'm I'm not sure who's best to answer this or if anybody can, but I'm curious as to why that property was landlocked south of the creek. Is it because the creek migrated out of its existing alignment at some point? Kind of stranded that property there or is it just the way it was plotted?
I'm happy to give my two cents there. Um, if you look at the original Old Town Plats from eighteen seventy-nine, nineteen oh five, um, those lines were drawn often irrespective of geological features. So um you can kind of see the weird shape of three eighteen West Arkansas as it stands. It's sort of a uh weird-shaped property. That actually entails uh or comprises four or five, maybe six different Old Town lots, which also are cut off by Pleasant Avenue. So the the Old Town lots don't necessarily take into account the creek. So there are variety of lots there that that bisected, that were bisected by the creek. And created.
And there also used to be a alley that ran east to west, kind of where the the three eighteen Arkansas kind of juts over to the east a little bit. Um, there was an alley that ran through there. Um, and so I do think that there was an opportunity for access probably through, you know, deeding of land and things like that. That did change and obviously the vacation of the alley. But I think a lot of things changed from when it was originally plotted to um where we are today.
Yes, I have a question somewhat related to the the property. I think what they're proposing makes a lot of sense. I have no objection to it, but I'd like to have a little bit of maybe clarification, Brian or Sean. This winter, that property was touch and go from some ice dam flooding. And that the the extents of the ice dam flooding are a little bit beyond what we show as a floodway or a flood zone. And then I talked to a resident. It's a generation ago, there was ice dam flooding that was significantly worse than we had this last winter. And so the proposal there to build another house right next to the creek in that zone that is subject to some, you know, ice dam flooding. There was a lot of back and forth then about whose responsibility is it to mitigate that. So from the town's perspective, I believe our hands are pretty limited with what we can do to mitigate an ice dam. Is that correct?
Sean and I are both nodding our head on that as kind of a, you know, an act of nature at that point. And from my understanding, I think Cottonwood Creek in this instance essentially froze from the bottom. And so there's really only so much we were, we would be able to do, honestly.
Yeah. And that that flooding extended outside the map boundary, but I mean, the map boundary is what you have to work with with the floodway and the the floodplain. Anyway, just to comment that that um you'll will have more value in in harm's way from a ice dam event.
Thank you, and we had a resident of the public and nearby neighbor make a similar comment at planning and zoning. We take that very seriously from a applicant perspective.
Other questions? Comments?
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Public comment.
Yes, I'd like to open it to public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to comment? Or anyone on Zoom?
Nobody has their hand raised on Zoom?
Is there anyone here who'd like to comment? Okay, no, I'll call this co- public comment. And um, does the board have any further questions? Okay, um, this, are we ready to um to vote on Colorado ordinance number eleven? There a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance number eleven.
A second.
Guys, we have Rice and Hike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Close the hearing. Okay, now we have all of directing the heads of departments.
Yes.
Budget.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees. So yeah, so page ninety-one of your packet uh is a presentation that we'll go through tonight. We'll spend roughly an hour plus um going through department uh level presentations. And this is meant to be an opportunity for the department heads to share with you all uh what they're looking at for their budget, what they've gone through this year and and kind of how that's setting the stage for uh how they're planning for next year. Because this is an opportunity for the board also to ask questions and have some discussion with the department heads while we're all here together. Once we move ahead after this point, I guess we'll go to the next slide here. Um, we we open up the budget to the public and and start kicking off our public hearings, which doesn't mean that we stop having discussion. Um, but this is a nice opportunity to have a staff level with board discussion before um uh before you start hearing from the from the public. Um, yeah, quite a bit of work has gone into the budget so far. I want to uh really thank the department heads for all they've done, putting together their operating and capital requests. Uh, Brian and I have spent time uh one-on-one discussions with each department, digging in a little bit deeper. Uh, and what we do is we 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 put it all together, we mash it together, see what happens, does it fit? Uh, but there's quite a bit of back and forth to refine uh refine the requests, especially on the capital side, to make sure that we're we're being as creative as we can with our funding and grants. Are we pulling money from the general fund or uh one of our other special revenue funds? So um, a lot of that is is pretty well together and that's what we will present at the next meeting. Uh, tonight will be higher level. Uh, we can certainly drill into some some of the specifics you might hear about, but really, it's that higher level goals, uh project level, that kind of thing. Um, yeah, and then we'll get into public hearings and then ideally wrap up in December. Um, so the next slide, I'm not going to dive into deep here, but this this gives you a sense. We looked at last time, I reminded you, hey, here's here are those higher level uh key outcome areas that come from our collective vision statement and and uh, you know, hopefully tied to things like our new comp plan. But you you'll see here uh what what Brian and the department heads have identified at a pretty high level, uh project-wise, uh policy-wise, uh sometimes uh kind of categorized by those key outcome areas. So um, you know, this is one that you all should be familiar with. If you see something on here that you're like, what is that? Yeah, that would be a good question to bring up uh with staff tonight. Or if you don't see something on here perfectly acceptable to ask, hey, what about that one thing we talked about? I don't see it here. I'm not hearing it at the department level. Um, so that's what that slide represents. Before I pass it off to our airport team, um, I will say I added quite a few charts at the end of this. I kind of nerded out on some graphs while uh while the numbers were in front of me. So I, you know, again, if you look at one of those and you have some questions about what does that mean, we can touch on that after the presentation. I'm happy to do that. Um, but certainly want to give the department heads plenty of time to uh to present their uh what's on their mind. So, Chandler, you want to, you want to take it first?
I'll go first.
Alright.
Thank you for allowing us time in your writing. Um, I do like to highlight that the the airport welcomes over fifteen thousand people annually and is and is considered the gateway for many visitors and locals to the town and the region. And over the last month and a half since the airport manager succession, I've spent a good deal of time better familiarizing myself with incredible history of the airport and the legacy of past managers. So I really wanted to lay out a focused and intentional airport strategic plan because I also felt that it was important to better align our align ourselves um with the new comp plan and adjust our airport vision a little bit to that. Um, because the results um spoke for themselves and I wanted to better align ourselves with what the community said it it desired from the airport. So I hope that drive to better align the airport with the community and to build something extraordinary together is my legacy as the airport manager. That would need a focus on the pursuit of economic and infrastructure development at the airport, not just out there on our land, but also in the commercial corridor surrounding the airport. So to highlight, I just want to look first at that vision statement and element number one, which is to continue as a recognized economic engine for the town of Buena Vista and Chaffey County. And I feel that 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 perfectly aligns with the economy and housing recommendation, which is to harness, it's literally to harness the airport as an economic driver. And one of the ways that we seek to do that is by annexation, which will streamline some regulatory. And one of the ways that we seek to do that is by annexation, which will streamline some regulatory oversight. And number two element of our vision statement is to capitalize on the airport as a transportation hub for on-demand passengers and cargo. That aligns with one of our midterm strategic plans, which is to develop infrastructure at the airport. Number three under the vision statement is to explore expanding industries and operations support. That includes emergency wildland incidents, UAS drones, and search and rescue. And so that that aligns with the water and environment recommendation of the comp plan, which says, quote, "Support local change to improve resilience to wildfire," end quote. And we at the airport have always been and will always be ready at a moment's notice for emergency staging. It's what we do. So let's pop over to slide two. Thank you. So I feel like even though I've only been in this role for about two months, I've been here for almost eight years. And I feel over the past couple of years, we've we've been in an era of ongoing maintenance and cleanup, and we've we've focused on what we haven't had. But we're moving into a new era of exciting capital project funding, payment rehab, and economic development. And this perfectly aligns with the community's desire in the comp plan. So I'd like to focus right now on one of our strengths, which is in that upper right-hand corner, that yellow box, which is our staff. And I I truly believe that right now we have the strongest, most capable staff that we've ever had at the airport. Currently, that consists of three people, myself as a full-time airport manager, a full-time airfield operations supervisor, and we're now supported by a flight line staff who we intend to make full time in the new year if the budget approves with the addition of a quarter to halftime flight line staff. And that will put us at full staffing for twenty twenty-six. So in the red box, some highlights, some things that we've achieved in twenty twenty-five. We we supported the the two local fires, the Mountain View and the La Plata Wildland Fire staging. We were there for both of those. We survived the airport manager succession. We are in phase one of a much-needed HVAC replacement at the airport that will give us heat almost in the nick of time. And we've increased operations and fuel sales. And we've also supported, in addition to the wildland fire teams, we've supported a Twin Otter Neon survey team. Colorado Parachute Solutions is out there with us right now. You may have seen them falling out of the sky all week. And Boeing is up and coming, and we've also supported Helicast in in their efforts to support the La Plata fire. We we owe a great deal of of support to our Air Advisory Board for helping us bring the guiding document updates to fruition. And our CIP project is finally currently underway with our North Apron and Rehab expansion out there right now. If you're interested, please come take a look. There's dirt flying and trucks rolling. So we're excited that they're there with us in conjunction with a project in Salida right now. A couple of events that we've supported are an intergovernmental meeting, the High Lonesome One Hundred Legal Staging, and then a couple of other fundraisers for some local organizations. I just very quickly want to focus on a few of the challenges and opportunities. So short-term wise, we we do have an aging facility. We've talked about that a lot. And what we intend to do about that in twenty twenty-six is to move into phase two of the HVAC system replacement, do some upgrades around the terminal, because we do have increasing demand for rental space and special events, and we hope it'll alleviate that. And kind of lower down towards the midterm, we are hoping to work with our engineer to to provide some estimates for the town and for the feds and CDOT for a South Apron expansion and hangar development in the near future. But what I really want to draw attention to, and I think is most exciting, and this is what we're most excited about at the airport, is down at the very bottom under challenges and opportunities is our long-term opportunity. And what that means is the FAA and CDOT, I just found this out today, the actual numbers, that the FAA and CDOT have committed to providing over eleven to twelve million dollars to the airport in the next three years. And that includes a design and complete rehabilitation of our runway taxiway pavement, as well as replacement of our original runway lighting and signage systems in twenty twenty-eight. And that project totals in itself nine million dollars. So after that magic massive project completion and combined with our tight-on rehab that we did in twenty twenty-three, this year's apron rehab and expansion, our airport pavement will be at about ninety-five percent rehabilitated. So that's not only unprecedented for us at our airport, it's it's really unprecedented about any airport our size. So once that comes to fruition and we complete that in twenty twenty-eight, that will really allow us to refocus our attention elsewhere on things such as hangar development, fleet and facility rehab, all of these things of which will propel us into the next area of re, next era of revitalization. So we can provide an exciting future of economic prosperity and increased commercial activity as the community has shared that it desires through the comp plan. So on that right-hand side columns and projects and key changes for twenty twenty-six, what we're looking at next year, this is our roadmap. So we have some small maintenance projects that we're going to undertake, some hangar stormwater management. Hangar is still flooding, not quite as badly as it did before with some small mitigations, but we want to alleviate that completely. Some south hangar structural improvements and also some revitalization to our FBO and terminal to to enhance customer experience. We're always looking to streamline our finance and POS system. We always will, just to just to help the town, just to provide more accurate numbers for the town and the community and ourselves. One of the things that we that we have to tackle in this, this is going to be, it's kind of new on our plate, but it's been in my mind for a while, is this formalized addressing that we need to do for both the FBO internal offices and the and our airport tenants. And that will, that's in pursuit of this new hangar development that we'd like to see out there. And the annexation of the airport property is also in pursuit of the intent to develop. So a couple other key changes, not so much key changes, but additional pursuits. We've been doing this a little bit. I'd like to do more of it, is to explore new revenue sources such as grants and loans to meet our increasing capital needs. And then expand our interdepartmental business as well as intergovernmental partnerships. And that and that's on me to to educate myself a little bit and improve on on doing that for. So in closing, even though I've only been in this role for a couple of months, I've been here for eight years. And I just want the community to understand, staff to understand, the board, mayor, I want everybody to understand that I'm I'm listening to you and that I'm listening to the community. We're a small but mighty team, that's what I always say. And we are working to drive all of all of our aspirations for economic vitality every day. So thank you for putting your trust in us, and we intend to do great ones.
Chandra, when when you get into the long-term CDOT project funded by them mostly, is there an amount that we would have to pay?
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. So over the next few years, I will, I do intend to work with the county, the town staff, Philip, Brian, of course, and the board to present a realistic view of how much we will have to match in order to receive that twelve million dollars. And that number will be coming very soon.
Okay, like you.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Anything for Chandra?
Hit me with the hard stuff. Ready?
I was just waiting for Andrew.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you. Very good. That was a good report. All right, Sean. Would you like to introduce Sean?
Yeah, this is Sean.
Yeah, thanks for the.
He has the hardest there.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, like, yeah, as far as like public speaking, yeah, bear with me, so. Yeah, so, yeah, a little history. Been fortunate to work with this team for quite a while. I got to work with previous public works directors in the past, and so so that that is an edge that most people don't get, know the community pretty well. So and and the relationships that the team has had, you know, a few people that have worked there a long time. So affectionately call us the Sherpas, so we're just trying to make sure, you know, we're sure being in the town in the right direction. Yeah, so, yeah, it's Public Works, yeah, it's water streets, parks, fleet maintenance, facilities maintenance, some custodial needs for our for our buildings. And, yeah, and when we're fully staffed, there's fifteen strongless and three seasons. Don't want to overset the fact that Jesse has worked at the cemetery now going on, what, three or four, four seasons? And it's, yeah, that, let's see, a little signs that we see when we come in, that whole surround yourself is a real thing. So appreciate the team that we have. So, yeah. It's Danielle, it's Mark, it's Jay, it's Tyler, it's Joe, it's Chris, Hawk, Aaron, Jackie, Norm, Mike, Danny, and Kate, and myself. And we're down one water operator right now, which we've been looking for since June. And then, yeah, and Jesse, Jesse's done an amazing job. I always kind of forget to remember the seasonal effort that he provides us for that, for that, at the cemetery. So, yeah, we also utilize several engineering consultants, Right Water. They've been with the town for maybe going on three decades, somewhere around that case, maybe four decades. KLJ recently, this last year. Al and his team was with Water Solutions. And I'm going to add, one of the consultants that did a pretty amazing job for us last year, helping us with the water modeling, which is a tool that we now have to evaluate our infrastructure and water re-sizeing and helping us make sure that our our water meets the needs of future developments. And that's Providence Infrastructure Consultants. It was a pretty, pretty good year for for, from an engineer standpoint, just getting that along was was really, really important that we got that. So thanks for everybody that was involved in that. The twenty twenty-five highlights, yeah, there's a lot to mention. I haven't listed in there. I I left out a couple of ones that were pretty big, and I think that a couple of them are coming into, coming coming your way here pretty soon too. But, yeah, the all the paving projects that we did, the water plant project, expansion project, the street paving sidewalk product project that we did on Marquette Street, some of the trip hazard sidewalks that we've we've done throughout town, and the Columbine Park softball, the Stormwater Master Plan, which is coming your way, and the Plant and Guide Updates, which are coming your way too. So had a pretty good, pretty good, pretty good, pretty good, pretty good year so far. Right now, we're working on getting the community center landscaped and working on the demonstration garden here on the south side as as we speak, and that should be wrapping up here, here pretty soon, probably this week. Moving on to some of the other in-kind projects that we have with that team. Jump to the next slide and go to challenges and opportunities. These are kind of always the same challenges and opportunities, kind of the same thing. I think, I think, you know, I think the goal was always to stay connected with the town of BV and the people that live here. And I kind of feel like our department continues to build that bond with the community, and and I hope that their community, you know, feels the same way. We're there for, we're there, we're here for for everybody. We're here for you, you all. And so one of our goals is to make sure that we we're a resource and people feel like they can reach out to us whenever they need to. Yeah, Drew kind of talked about the creek, and, yeah, it was kind of an interesting year. And I kind of, you know, jotted down the disaster preparedness and safety. And that's a big broad stroke. I mean, we did have a creek that froze up from the bottom up this year, which was interesting and and terrifying and, you know, kind of one of those situations that you.
I had never experienced before.
But, you know, reaching out to the county team, potentially, when it went to emergency response, but did reach out to JP Fire and just try to create a lot more awareness of what is happening with that situation and continue to evaluate it. And then we had a fire this summer that was north of town that disrupted our power grid too, so. Paying attention to that, to that and and learning from it and developing, you know, and evaluating plans that we have. Yeah. Lack of snowfall also could have potentially created situations with in-stream closure this year. So there's a lot going on from like a smaller scale, you know, from the safety things, you know, whether they're all big and they're all important because little things add up to big things. But it's important to work on things like sidewalk trip hazards, safe playgrounds, working on our stormwater tree trimming and tree removals, trying to keep our trees, our streets safe from hazardous trees as well. Water planning, water emergency response, planning vulnerabilities. And kind of a good keynote, and not that it really lands into this category, but we had our, we had a sanitary survey with CDPH this this month, and it had been about seven years since we'd had one. Typically, they're held about every three years. So it's been a been a while since we've had one, and no violations. So, yeah, that's great. So.
Great team.
I'm sorry for going so much privating, and I know that we only have an hour, but I want to kind of, you know, just kind of bear with me. And I'll get through this pretty quick. I'll just start speed reading here. Staffing for success and growth, that's an everyday, year-to-year goal. We've had good teams in the past, and I'm really excited for the team that we have right now, really excited for the team that we have right now. Some implementation for asset management and strategic planning for aging infrastructure. We've spent probably about seven years focusing on water plant expansion project, responding and reacting and evaluating our street paving projects. I think it's time right now to start building a template and a plan and prioritize and budget for for projects for the next five years and beyond. So one of the things that we we tend to kind of lose track of is like we do, that I lose track of, and it comes up. But we do manage some complex projects, and and those are opportunities and challenges. Keeping up with regulatory compliance changes, this is nothing new to us, but it needs, you know, needs our diligence constantly to to make sure we're we're keeping up with things. Environmental stewardship, we have a lot of impact going on right now. We have a lot of impact happening to our services and our soils and areas, so. And, yeah, then I think the big one is for me, these are exciting ones, is continue to evaluate with twenty twenty-six public works, kind of in-kind projects, and these are like the projects that we're doing where we might be installing a fence of a cemetery, working at the community center, working on sidewalks, or helping to assist with sidewalks on Marquette Street. Looking for sure, we have two projects, I think, that that are go. I know the one for sure will be getting the driveways installed to the cisterns at the airport property. So that's that's been on our to-do list for about twelve months. Anyways, projects and key changes for twenty twenty-six, getting well for out to bit. Getting, I'm sorry, yeah, getting well for out to bit, start working on the design approval for, moving forward with that. Looking at more sidewalk replacements as well. I think this is going to be a good year for us to kind of focus on sidewalks and curbing that are that are being impacted by trees and 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 some of the improvements that we need to do on, maintain downtown district. Trip hazards, big thing. Implement the water conservation plan, start connecting with the community on that. It's going to be pretty important to do. Keep applying the conservation practices, environmental efforts. I really need to get a handle on the town land, open spaces and the rideaways. Recent staff additions, we should be able to do this pretty good. We have some really talented team that that know those areas. Gun Club did, the Gun Club did a mitigation for the lead shot and cleaned all that up and and revegetated it in the late spring, early summer, and then it never rained. So we need to evaluate that and probably revegetate that one more time this year to make sure that comes through. We have the water plant impacts that we've had out there. So the the invasive thistle, cochia, they take every bare spot in town if the grass is grown or the vegetation is disrupted. But, yeah, back to the strategic strategic planning, big goal there. We're already working with our with our Swift Water and Mark Corner, our team, to start evaluating and and prioritizing some of those projects, and we'll be coming to you once we get, get that, get that kind of set up in a more consumable fashion. And really, the the big thing, you know, the big things we want to do on the streets, you know, continue to kind of start talking to the water infrastructure moving forward. So I can see us doing a lot more sidewalks this year, and I'd like to get into and pay opinion in Valdano, Arkansas. That's behind the middle and the high school, those those roads have been dirt for about going on four or five, five years now. And so working on the stormwater design for that and and get those, get those areas. And so working on the stormwater, um, design for that and, and those, get those areas paid. But, um, I'm sure there's, um, a lot more that we'll have coming your way as we move into budget or move into, um, the, uh, the next coming year with, with these projects, but these are kind of the goals that I have right now. So. Any questions?
Sean is, uh, a generator for the upper zone still on the table?
It is.
I'm taking care of our aging infrastructure. Look for that to be a significant amount over the few years, cause we haven't been taking care of the problem unless there was a line that broke or so for taking care of aging infrastructure. Are we at a spot where when something is so many years old, you replace that line or?
Yeah, there, there's that. There's the useful life and the good thing is water mains lasts a long time if they're installed correctly. Um, if they're not installed correctly, that changes, changes the use, you know, the, and, you know, we've evaluated it and, and you've been a part of a lot of these discussions and we found a, an age of pipe that was installed in things like nineteen sixty-five to nineteen sixty-six. Seems to be kind of a problem child within our infrastructure right now. And really, I mean, we look at, um, we look at, you know, we, we have some maps that we've kind of pinned, right? So we've identified where we've been, um, probably close to the last ten years and those areas are pretty well identified now because we've, we've marked all the repairs that we've done there where they're, um, and we've identified it from, sometimes it's a service line and sometimes it's a, it's a water main crack in the pipe and those pipes are the ones that seem to have most of the cracks in the pipes. I would say like, it's not a good thing, um, but it's, it's beneficial thing to, to, um, also identify that most of those lines are six inch lines and so they're undersized as well. And I think part of the, part of the challenge or part of the evaluation in, in how we're doing this is one, you know, yeah, we, we want to work on our unaccounted. Uh, we want to, um, you know, have, have a better record of, of to like, you know, how they, you know, or slow down how much water we're losing through the system. But also part of this effort will be for better fire protection as well. And so addressing that, um, along with this. So there, you know, there's probably like three parallel calls that are happening as, as we evaluate this. And I think for me, I think, um, I like the idea of like addressing fire flow as, as one of the priorities because I can see with the mapping that there's some, there's some streets that don't have water mains that could use water mains that would help loop our system while we continue to address, you know, the leaks. Um, you know, you've seen it. I mean, we had a, we had a, a couple of years where unaccounted was respectable and within the range. And then we had a year, a few years where it wasn't and, you know, we're currently kind of battling that. Always still, it feels like a finger in the dyke from time to time, right? Um, so you plow in a hole and another starts. But that, but they're talking to each other and I, I look and I'm looking at the streets too. And I think a really good project for us to do would maybe be to rehabilitate, um, like Colorado Avenue North, um, because the streets and the sidewalks and the curb and gutter are, are aging as well. And that's a street that doesn't have a water main on it at all. Uh, there's, there's, there's a partial water main on it, but it doesn't connect to Main Street and that would be a good looping store source for us. And it could be maybe a good project to evaluate the costs on it, create the loop in there and do a full-blown infrastructure with new sidewalks, curb and gutter, tree lawn areas and reach out to our other agencies that have, you know, a stakeholder at most, other people that have utilities in there and, and give them plenty of time to maybe plan for it as well. And since we have the street ripped up, it's a good opportunity for everybody to go look at their, what, what they have in the ground as well.
Wow, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how much longer I'll be around here. I think I got a few more years left at me, but I'd like to have some place for the community for, for, you know, for when, when I'm not here. Or at least kind of start focusing on, on what, how much everything is gonna cost, right? So we can start planning, budgeting for it. That was really one, one, sorry.
That's a good answer.
Yeah, thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions for Sean? Well, thank you. Keep it all working. Um, next we have, uh, the police department with Chief Dean Morgan.
I figure I'll come to the podium.
All right, you're in.
So I can see everyone, otherwise I feel like I'm giving my budget to the back of Sean's head, which also I can see the slide here. Um, so, uh, the first thing on the slide there, uh, I tried to make ours look as nice as the airports, but we don't have any airplanes. So I'll do my best. I liked how Sean put the, uh, vision statement. Uh, this is the B V P D's mission statement, which is very important to us, kind of acts as a pole star for how we conduct business. Uh, one of the things I really like about the town employee manual is it gives the chain of command and it lists the citizens at the top. That's something that is critical to the, uh, police department because we believe our authority comes from the citizens. We take that very seriously. Um, as we look at the budget this year, um, the B V P D when fully staffed consists of twelve officers. Um, every police agency up here, the sheriff's office, uh, Salida Police, ourselves, um, those numbers fluctuate and this has been a super hard year for the B V P D. Um, the last few months, we've been down four officers. So through the summer, um, we've carried a really heavy weight on our shoulders. Um, we've had one on light duty. Um, we've had a couple leave to attrition. Um, relief is coming. We have, um, our maternity leave officers coming back in about a week. Uh, we got one graduated from the academy in January. We just did a hiring process, made it conditional to one person and then we have two that we're looking at closely who are former military. So we're really excited. So relief is coming. Um, but the officers have done a great job throughout the summer, um, working a lot of long, hard hours. Um, some of the highlights for twenty twenty-five, I applied for several grants. I got a, uh, grant for our DUI overtime enforcement that is paid by C doc. And then also, uh, we got a grant to pay for Anita Roten's Police Academy, uh, which she's currently attending. Talked to her yesterday. She's doing really well. So we're excited to have her out on the streets with us in January. Um, I did apply for a grant for Meridian barricades, which I will talk about shortly. We did not receive that grant. Um, let's see. Yeah. Also on, on top of some of the highlights for some of the monetary things, we've just attended a lot of really excellent trainings. Because of our new building and the really nice training room, we've been able to host a lot of trainings where our officers have benefited and then other agencies in the region have benefited. Um, the Bina Vista Police Department services this community of roughly three thousand and as we know that explodes in the summertime. And, um, we, uh, again, we have a lot of visitors. One of the things I would look at really closely in this budget cycle is asking for more officers. Um, however, with the current staffing difficulties we've had, I don't think that's wise. I'd like to see our department get to a good staffing level and maintain that, um, which will be helpful. Looking at some of the, uh, challenges, um, increased calls for service as of last week, I asked dispatch, um, in twenty twenty-five, we've so far responded to four thousand calls for service. Again, that's being a twelve man department that's been down four officers. So that's been a pretty heavy lift for us. Um, like I said there, I talked about, um, hiring and retention has been a challenge. Um, K nine four was retired, which was a very valuable resource. Um, maintaining officer wellness, um, is important. I, as a chief, get really, um, concerned about my officers when they do work so many hours and it's not a regular job. They're dealing with some very difficult situations sometimes. Um, last Wednesday, um, I went home and then I got a call from an officer that they got involved in a pursuit assisting Chafee County. Um, two of the deputies were rammed. Um, the officers, uh, one of them, the vehicle drove toward them. Um, some high stress things these guys are dealing with. I talked to Officer Palmford last night, uh, maybe two nights ago. It all runs together. He worked about a sixteen-hour day, um, dealing with all kinds of calls for service. So that, that's a real concern for burnout for our officers. They're very committed. They're very dedicated, but along with that, we need to understand that quality of service and officer wellness is something we have to look at really carefully. Um, one of the things that we go into on the budget and opportunities and projects, um, I would like to thank everybody in this room for, for being a mentor to me, um, especially Philip and Brian and all the department heads. We meet bi-monthly for a staff meeting. Um, and with all these department heads, I've learned so much about budgets, about leadership, about different things. Um, all of the department heads and people in this room, and most of them I would guess have already worked, uh, eight to ten hour day and we're here tonight. And we're happy to do it. We love serving the community. And I think a lot of the trustees are in that same position too, where you've worked and now you're here. The poor mayor, you have a cold apparently and you're here. So, um, really appreciate that and the dedication. Some of the things we're looking at, um, the police department budget from year to year is fairly, uh, similar with our operating costs, our salaries. Usually we look at replacing one patrol car per year. Um, Sergeant, or I'm sorry, Commander Garcia is really good at budgeting and, and handling the patrol car things. So we did budget for a new patrol car last year, but we were able to find a, a used, um, patrol car from the district attorney's office that we bought as an investigator's vehicle. We got a really good, uh, money savings from that. And then we were able to purchase a patrol car for next year with what was left over and Philip and Brian helped us coordinate that. So for the patrol car, we're good. Um, we are asking for, if you've looked at our capital budget, an outfit of about thirty thousand dollars and that's for all the lights, radios, um, and the equipment, um, for a police rated patrol car. Um, the other thing we're looking at for twenty twenty-six is a drone. Uh, that's not a capital project. That's maybe a two to three thousand dollar expense. Um, that's something that, um, if you look at the sheriff's office webpage today, they actually posted a video where we used one of their drones. Um, it's something that really enhances, um, our abilities for public safety and officer safety. In the situation, the sheriff's office posted, it was a, uh, um, some individuals who barricaded in a crawl space and rather than send an officer or even a K nine into that dangerous environment, we're able to send a drone and locate the people and have the situation end peacefully. Uh, dozens of uses for a drone. The, uh, community dinner, we had the sheriff's office set up to help us with, uh, what we call Overwatch, which is some guys on the rooftops and a drone and the SWAT team got deployed and we weren't able to use them. So at the last minute, we're really happy that Chafee Fire, uh, provided us their drone and really helped us keep an Overwatch on those rooftops, which can be a threat. Um, in a recent, uh, special events meeting, we talked with Danielle from Public Works. I believe you guys have to check for ice or something on the water tower quarterly or something. And that's another, um, we could, well, the drone out to other departments as well to, you know, for things like that. How, how do you check for that now?
Well, it's actually part of a company or, uh, quarterly take inspections, but we climb up.
Okay.
It's terrifying.
So that's an example of some of the uses of, of the drone. Um, and that would kind of help supplement the, the canine, that the drone can't bite people, but it can definitely go into places that are unsafe for officers. And honestly, I wouldn't want to get a dog hurt either. Um, like I said there, relief is coming. Um, some other things, um, the patrol car purchase, I talked about the barricades. Um, if you're at the community dinner, a lot of you probably saw the Meridian barricades, um, fantastic tool for crowd protection, but super expensive. It's about a hundred fifty thousand dollar price tag. Um, and watching the setup and tear down, it's a very involved process. So we looked at some other options. Um, you know, Brian and I had some good discussions and we looked at a company that provides, um, bollards, which is like the, the poles that go into the ground. Um, and there's a company that provides crash rated ones that are gonna be a much better solution, I think, for Bina Vista and a lot cheaper. Um, the lower cost does not sacrifice public safety. Um, it's just a, uh, a different platform. And there's a lot of tactical considerations we can look at to make sure that that is addressed, the public safety aspect is addressed. But we have about probably eight special events a year on East Main Street where I'm very concerned about, um, vehicle attacks on crowds, that these would be very critical in protecting our citizens. Um, the last thing I have on there is, uh, new technologies. I think the drone is an aspect of that. Um, something else we're looking at, um, you might see that we're asking for some money for, uh, upgrade to Axon, which is our, our body cameras, um, through Taser. Um, one of the things, it's experimental and we're actually, um, experimenting with this through October sixth, um, Axon Assist where I can hold down a button and it activates artificial intelligence where if someone is speaking to me in another language, it would, um, um, detect the language and then translate. So we can hold the button down and it'll translate from English to that language or vice versa. So fascinating. I started this job in two thousand, they didn't have any of this stuff, drones or anything. So when your camera starts talking in another language and that, and we've already experimented with it and that person understands it, speaks to us and then it tells us what they're saying. It's, it's fascinating. Uh, I, I'll probably post a video on our Facebook page where I tested it with YouTube where I put, um, Spanish speaking and, um, I think Japanese, um, just randomly and it detected it and translated. And you can see at the bottom of the screen it was accurate. So it's pretty interesting things. Um, did I miss anything?
No, they're good.
All right. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Dean? We got one.
Chief Morgan, I know, um, familiar with bollards also. Last year, I think you talked about like literal blockades, like the kind of cement ones. Is your recommendation this year one or the other? Like, are you more interested in bollards now than the movable ones?
Yeah, the movable ones, they can be super good too. There's just such a, um, heavy lift, like literally for installing those. The, the bollards, um, as I talked to the rep, they can be installed on the sidewalk through, uh, holes in the ground, which can actually provide protection to citizens on the sidewalk. And then when we have a special event, I think they're two hundred twenty-five pounds. So, you know, a couple of officers lift them, put them into the, the holes in the street that are usually covered. Um, and they are crash rated to a certain, um, speed. Um, so what we can do is prior to the, the lead up to those, we can put things that offset. So if a vehicle was coming, it would have to navigate and slow down to a certain speed. So there's definitely some thought that goes into it, but, um, having aluminum crowd fencing or plastic barriers when we have a Halloween parade of all of our elementary kids just is not, not good. So, um, I, I'm excited about this option.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions, Chief Morgan. On the, the slide you mentioned that officers serve a community of roughly three thousand citizens. Do you have an idea of how many, what our transient population or how many souls are in the county during the peak of this peak season?
I could tell you when there's, uh, festivals at the meadows, it's plus ten thousand. Um, beyond that, I, I don't know. I've heard different numbers, but there's some weekends that, um, I, I would estimate an additional, I don't know. I honestly don't know. But I'd say fifty to a hundred.
Yeah, just curious if there's any like, you know, cell phone tower date or anything that would help.
The recent data that we just got from the E D C is that our population in the summer grows about fifteen thousand.
One five?
One five.
Daily. Yeah, not a spike, but.
But we stabilize around fifteen thousand in the summer.
You visited us? I know, I said the same thing when I saw it, but, yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we updated our monitoring plan. Um, we, some of those numbers are important for the monitoring.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I think it was really close to thirteen to fifteen thousand.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think that's, you know, and that leads to my, my, I guess the second question is just something I'd like for us to at least consider in the coming months or just more of a conversation. A lot of your reports often mention a level of overload and burnout among, uh, among your officers. And, um, balancing a budget with limited resources and, I mean, everything comes at a cost and it seems like that adding, adding officers would have to come from, you know, somewhere else. And so that's a very delicate conversation to have among other staffs of whether you can add, you know, F T E. Given that reality, I just wonder other, what other ideas that, that we might look at exploring to help mitigate some of the burnout and overload?
Yeah, one of the things I budgeted for. Yeah, one of the things I budgeted for, I think it's my operational budget is called Code Forward Counseling. And this is first responder specific counseling. And it would offer our officers up to six counseling sessions paid for per year. And no questions asked if they feel they need to talk to somebody or they're struggling with something. That's one resource we're providing. Governor Polis passed some laws for officer wellness in the last few years. One of them was like Pierce Court Teams, which the 11th Judicial District, which is us, has those. So there are resources for officers to work on that. My concerns are when officers are giving up time with family and things like that.
Absolutely. My question was not more so much a budget related, but just, are you doing too much? Is there too much going on for the staff that you have?
Yeah.
And so that's the conversation that I'd like to have going forward is what do we do about that?
I would suspect that a lot of the town departments would feel the same way.
Absolutely. And that's not something we can snap our fingers and add budget, but we can still look at the, just the level of stuff that's going on and the overload that puts on our departments.
Yeah, it's something we all look at and navigating those monthly staff meetings we have, it comes up a lot. And there's, there's a lot of good ideas, but there's, like you said, there's not a magic wand solution.
It seems like, like we lose officers from Bina Vista to the sheriff's department. That seems to be fairly frequent. Have we paid for a lot of training for those officers? And then they, and they get the trained officer. Be nice if they had to pay for that.
I do want to step in there. I don't think we actually have lost a lot of officers to the county. Is that, can you clarify that, Chief?
I think in the last, since I've been chief, I think we've lost two.
Okay.
We've had one apply that didn't get hired. So I, and Sheriff Rourke is outstanding sheriff. And we covet our relationship with the sheriff's office. And between us and Salida, we have an agreement that there won't be any recruiting. So sometimes it's, it's different reasons someone might go to the sheriff's office. So we've only lost two in the last five years.
Okay.
But we've lost some to other departments within the state or in the United States. And that's sometimes paid, sometimes it's family, different things. So one of the challenges we're looking at right now is specific to our current hiring process is we seem to have the most success when we hire local people. So the one, we've made a conditional offer to lives here. The sheriff's office is the same way. There's a good community investment when you hire someone that already lives here. The two that have former military experience that are not from here, we're super hesitant because we like them. But that promise of, oh, we love Bina Vista, we'd love to move there. The reality of that is it's a different thing. And it's really hard to note that commitment when all of a sudden they're like, well, actually my wife and kids like the school we're at, so we're going to stay in Colorado Springs or something. So a good hiring pool is difficult in this area.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're Shane, would you like to go to the podium?
I'll probably just stay here so I can see my, my notes on my computer here. But good evening, Mayor and Board of Trustees. Honestly, not a lot of changes, you know, kind of year to year for the recreation department as far as the, the budget goes this year. You know, we have a wide range of responsibilities within our department between programs, special event applications, all of our projects, reservation of parks and facilities and working with our advisory boards. We are still at five full-time employees, one part-time employee and a 50/50 employee split with planning. A lot of our highlights this year, you know, kind of last year going into the budget season. You know, I talked about how we were kind of setting ourselves up for a lot of big projects this year in 2025. And the good news is we are on track to complete most of those projects. And, you know, to, as Philip always likes to see, getting them out of the budget and not rolling them over for multiple years. A few of those projects, the biggest one for sure being Billy Cordova Memorial Park, which was the, definitely the biggest project that the recreation department has tackled. I think it's about over 1.3, 1.4 million dollars total for the expenses for that. Still working through a few little issues with the basketball court and the playground gates and a few other small things. But it, we've seen that park occupied pretty much since we opened it. So that was a pretty big success for this year. We're also working on, just about finished with the Chicago Ranch Loop Trail, which was actually not a project we planned on completing this year. But, you know, we definitely see the same thing as trustee Rice mentioned with, you know, employees being, you know, have a lot going on. Unfortunately, in our side, it's a lot of our own doing, you know, biting off more than we can chew. You know, Earl kept asking, you know, when is the money available for the Chicago Ranch Loop Trail? And it was available, so we went out and built the trail and would have been great not to do that with everything else we had going on.
It's a nice trail.
And also getting really close with the Pocket Wave 2.0. That should be, we should be out of the water by this time next week. And then just repairing the area around and kind of recovering from that project will be the final steps there. Also finished four smaller projects in the budget. We were finally found a funding source for our Parks Rec Trails Open Space Master Plan. We also put out the RFP for that and I, we have nine proposals this week. So now our staff has to find a qualified contractor out of those nine proposals. But that will be one of our few carryover projects going into next year. On the programming side of our department, we added Mahjong, which has been very popular. And went on some trips with older adults 50 plus and the young at heart group. I forgot to put the picture of Earl and all the seniors at the prison museum in Canyon City into my slides here. But we did have over 2,000 registrations in our recreation programs. That's pretty consistent with what we see over year to year. But, you know, for, you know, our population being 3,000, 2,000 registrations is quite a bit. We permitted and oversaw 61 unique special events and a number of event occurrences. The overall number of event occurrences was down this year, but the number of unique special events was up. So still, you know, seeing more and more special events in town every year. Also worked with you all to update some of our policies regarding special event vendors and temporary event sign permits. We hired two full-time year-round program assistants this year. And, you know, hoping we have a pretty stable programming team for the, for the foreseeable future. And over 30 seasonals helping us out in the summer, including eight umpires. It was the first time, first summer I've been here that I did an umpire softball game. So that was pretty great. We also hired a new programming recreation admin assistant after Ally decided she liked planning better than rec. Advance in her position, but she's been extremely helpful training our new hire. But, and then we have also in our billings here, hosted a number of Chaffey County Public Health and BV Library Events. Definitely seen a big increase in community center usage this year with the library being under construction. So moving along to our challenges and opportunities. Again, not too many changes in our challenges and opportunities. You know, trying to find a sustainable funding source for capital needs for parks, trails and recreation. Hoping to get some good data and suggestions and planning on that through the master plan process. We're also continuing our discussions with Chaffey County, Salida and Pontius Springs on funding opportunities and just exploring all of the options there. Sustaining year-round, long-term staff. High demand for outdoor spaces, very limited field space. You know, this past Sunday, there were some lacrosse games hosted down here at our soccer fields. I had a conversation with the gentleman that kind of organizes the youth cross. He'd like to be more involved with Bina Vista. Right now, they only practice in Salida, but they have players from both Bina Vista and Salida. And, but the challenge here is there just isn't any field space available. And then additionally, working with the community groups to address the needs of the town facilities. You know, the rodeo board out, the rodeo grounds, the drone club out, the drone park, the disc golf crew at the disc golf course and so on. So going into 2026, training our incoming staff to get up to speed and to increase our capacity. Just, yeah, make, getting all of our staff able to operate independently. That is the downside of hiring two new staff members this year, particularly filling the pinch right now with Tucker out on fraternity leave. And then we had two staff members gone on vacation this past weekend. So definitely, you know, yeah, feeling the stress of a lot going on. And then improving our existing facilities. We will be carrying over the River Park project, which includes the trail and boat ramp rehabilitation, the rock and roll trail, the Whipple Bridge decking replacement, which we'll talk about here soon later in the meeting. I'm sorry, it looks like I didn't update the projects there for this year. This upcoming year looks like we are planning to work on some projects that we've had on the docket for a while. Projects like Forest Square Park, working on the concrete there. You know, we've talked a little bit throughout the budget about our aging infrastructure. This building, the community center is definitely feeling, definitely starting to show its age as well, particularly in the, on the exterior. There's a lot of the siding, you know, nails are starting to push out. And looking to get improvements here on this building as well as working on some river safety improvements. And those will be presented throughout the budget process. But definitely our biggest project next year will be the master plan. And going through that process with a qualified contractor and working with those user groups of town facilities to make sure their needs are addressed and that they're operating, you know, and as the champions of their facilities, operating in a way that we would like to see. Yeah, would certainly welcome any questions.
Questions for Shane? Looks like you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now the planning department.
All right, me again. Yeah, I had to update these and reinvigorate them from Joel's gray slides, first slide from last year. So we added a little bit of color. But yeah, so our team is made up of myself, the planning director, our planner one and our planning technician, as well as a, our 50% admin assistant that we share with recreation. I think I'd be remiss if I go any further than saying this job is so hard. It is so much harder than I thought it would be. I think we've had some amazing successes this year. There's definitely been mistakes and hiccups along the way. The single two best decisions I have made since joining this department are promoting Ally and hiring Carly. I could not do this job without my team. They are solution oriented, they work so hard and they care a whole lot. And I think at the end of the day, like, what is anyone doing here that works for the town that doesn't care? And so I could not do what I do without them. And I'm just so excited for the progress that we're going to make into next year. I promise I did not make them come. I did not tell them that they had to be here. This is just how much they support and they show up. And I think that that is seen if you've joined us at any of the recent ribbon cutting events or historic landmarking events or anything like that. The planning department showing up for our community and coming out and supporting and being visible. And it all goes back to the fact that we care. So I just had to start by taking a moment to recognize the both of them and kind of the progress that we've made this year. And those accomplishments are the completion of the 2025 comprehensive plan. Man, I stood on the shoulders of giants as I kind of came into that, that process. There was a ton of work started before I got here and I just think we had a really solid effort, you know, in the last nine months to make that happen. I'm really excited and, you know, to hear all of the directors talk about bringing the comprehensive plan to life. And I think that just goes back to the fact that we got a ton of community feedback and we all hold ourselves accountable to doing what we need to do to, to bring that across the finish line. So super excited about that. Again, rebuilding our team, so we have an entirely new staff. Ally is our most senior staff member and she joined last September. So I think that just shows you, I would love for some longevity in the planning department. And I really think that that will just help us continue kind of the progress that we've made this year. But always with the focus of exceptional customer service, the folks that call us, email us, come to the door. That is our highest priority. Really working on expedited review times, creating transparency and consistency across our applications. We've reviewed a number of applications here, which I've shared. And noting that each of these land use applications and building permits and certificate of occupancy inspections. And all of these have multiple rounds of review. So although these are all independent projects, you know, that's, that's been a ton of work this year on top of really building our foundation of our department, which has been the focus. And then on top of, you know, our steady stream of inquiries. And that's a really hard thing to kind of capture in terms of numbers, but it's a lot. So I'm super excited about the progress that we've made. And really creating and improving our processes. And this includes developing a department finance tracker to help us even streamline things further outside of finance and really understand where our application fees are going and our deposits and making sure that things are allocated appropriately. That was step one, so that we make sure that we are good stewards of our citizens' tax dollars and making sure that we're allocating things appropriately. So that was number one. Number two is all of our files right now are paper or on individual drives. And they need a lot of work, it needs a lot of revamping. But we've created a development review schedule to help us manage our project workload so that we can track all these projects happening at the same time, communicate across departments as well as our external engineering department. With this, we've updated applications and we're revamping our pre-application process, which again is when an applicant has a proposal for some kind of project, they can come into the planning department for free and come and talk to us for 45 minutes to an hour to kind of flush out the big ticket items of what they've got ahead of them. Really focused on improving coordination between ourselves and the county building department as well as our other external review agencies. And this just helps us build trust and streamline our process. And then enhance community engagement efforts. Again, what are we doing here if we're not serving our community? And so really looking at ways to improve public noticing process and implementing neighborhood meetings with that recent code amendment, revamping my BV and really trying to get, you know, out and meeting folks and being present and available. Moving on to the next slide, talking about our challenges and opportunities. Just continued development and expansion of staff knowledge, kind of as Shane talked about. We are a department of three and a half and three, three of us are new, no, two and a half of us are new. So, yeah, I think we're just, we're figuring it out and we're super resilient and, you know, solution oriented. Ongoing education of. Ongoing education of the development community on recent code and process changes. And so really just working with our developers and making sure that as we make code amendments, we're doing something that works for our development community, but also protects the interests of the public. And increasing, we have increased our operating costs due to being fully staffed. But on the flip side of that, we implemented strategies to reduce contractor spending on external professional review services. So we work with KLJ and planning has not relied on them at all for planning review. So that has been done 100% internally this year. While we continue to work with them for engineering level review, we have cut costs significantly by making sure that our team takes on current planning review from a planning perspective. And then again, just ensuring that as developers pay deposits for that review, that we're appropriately allocating those funds and and improving our processes there and then continuing to build out our online resources, including my BV and GIS. Carly recently created a map that hasn't gone live yet, but it has mapped all of our historically surveyed and historically designated properties and links those surveys to those properties. So we have a lot of folks that are interested in development of their historic properties. And that's going to be a really awesome tool once that goes live. Looking into next year, I think a big project that's on everyone's radar is the city market development. And really that, as you can see, has got a lot of public interest and I think it touches more than just that property. And so moving that forward, continued development of the Crossing subdivision and South Main, growing commercial interest along Main Street. We've had a ton of pre-ops for East Main and also for some interest on West Main as well. Looking at starting to implement goals of the comprehensive plan. That includes evaluating town owned land for affordable housing opportunities and aligning our three mile plan with kind of all the goals the community just set. And then establishing expedited review processes for and incentives for affordable housing. So I wish that Jack stayed because this is top of mind for our department. And we're trying to tackle affordable housing from every direction so that we can find a solution that makes sense for our community. And so while we're looking at things like a potential of an inclusionary housing poss, you know, possibility, we're also looking at how do we leverage our current code to incentivize and support affordable housing. With that, you know, our team largely Carly just submitted a grant application yesterday to DOLA for a local planning capacity grant. And the grant would be $144,000 is our ask from DOLA. We would have to provide a $36,000 local match, so that a 20% match. But with that, the grant would cover online development review software that is the same as the counties. And so as folks get familiar with the planning software and the planning department software, when they transition to building permits with the county, it will all be the same. This will really help us expedite our review processes as well as create transparency and where these applications are in the process. We are also looking at hiring a consultant. This is probably the larger part of the grant that specializes in housing affordability so that they can do an audit of our code to look at opportunities to leverage our existing code to support housing. And that might be things like parking reductions. It might be things like, I mean, I don't know that you can get much more dense, you know, density bonuses, but I think that there are opportunities and there's a million ways to kind of solve this. And I would really love to bring in somebody that specializes in it and tells us what works within our community. And so with that, legal fees and some public engagement considerations were included within that grant. But that is a big ask, that's a big push for us this year. And then along the bottom of my slide, I highlighted some of our big projects this year. So you've got the Blainavita Wine Shop just behind us over in South Main. You've got the Crossing Development where they're dropping in the components for the CHT Affordable Homes. We've got the Midland Apartments and we took that picture from the courtyard and it's nice to see all the vegetation and landscaping and the life within those buildings. And so that's really great. Of course, the Grove Early Learning Program and then the Boulders Development as well. And these are really just kind of the projects on a large, large scale. But obviously we've had a ton of development and a ton of development interest this year. So we don't expect next year to slow down. So we're excited, we're ready, couldn't do it without them and super excited. So if there are any questions, please let me know.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't cry. Brian was probably like, oh no.
I'm a lot of good energy.
Yeah.
We're getting done. A really great job. I think we can all see how hard you're working. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good team.
Andrew?
You mentioned the job is finding it harder than it is.
Yep.
Do you find that like some parts challenge, some parts discouragement?
You know, I don't know that I get discouraged easily. So I think we, like, the town as a whole is a small but mighty team and we do a lot with a little bit of, you know, our resources are amazing, but the amount of hats that everyone before you wears is, it's a lot. So I think that's been more challenging than I anticipated.
So just if there are things we can do to help make the job easier, please don't be bashful to tell us about that.
Tell Brian exactly how you feel.
Reason I'm saying that, I know from time to time we'll have a discussion and then we'll ask staff for more information. And you've got a full-time job before you got here. And when we flippantly ask, could you look at this? You know, we just added 40 or 80 hours onto your plate before the next meeting. I want us to be cognizant of those asks of y'all.
Certainly a diverse group of people, isn't it? As far as the different departments.
I don't think it's seldom that the board gets to see all the departments in one spot, especially to dive into, you know, how much is offered and, you know, facilitated through kind of a relatively smaller organization. So I enjoy that component. I hope you guys do too.
Do have a good team here.
So, yeah, general administration, we get to see the whole picture and get to touch each department, which is really an enjoyable experience. So I use Joel's template, which is just text on it. General administration, we primarily live in the original town hall, built in 1983. It consists of administration, we've got finance and HR upstairs, information technology, town clerk, office with the deputy clerk. Town hall is within our budget, elections, municipal court, public support, board of trustees. All that equates to seven full-time, two part-time and two contractors, which is IT and a prosecutor. As far as 2025 highlights, grant administration does require time and effort and a good eye for detail to ensure that we're staying not only in compliance with the grant, but also prepared for the annual audit. Staffing stability, support, HR, myself, you know, available through the inevitable transition, whether it's entire departments or just seasonal employees or onboarding. Through the covenant street construction phase, navigation of the, congressional funding and the environmental assessment associated with that, improvements in and around town hall, taking care of what we do have. It is an old building, but it is nice. You know, the big project this year as far as the building was concerned was the town hall doors. Seems like a small project, but it has had a big impact in the community. As far as updating employee handbook, adoption of development and infrastructure manual, enhanced engagement and kind of bring my BV back to life and hopefully get to utilize that more and more across the departments to really kind of create that as a platform for people to see basically what is being talked about tonight. I once thought to be able to look across the departments. We, as far as CHA seemed stable for the time being. Completion of 2024 audit and a single audit, which required we spend more than $750,000 in federal money and migration of Tyler Financial Systems to the cloud. As far as you guys are concerned, saves money on the server. Beyond that, it is a good thing to have redundancy in the system. So challenges and opportunities, like I said, ongoing grant administration and compliance. This is a big one, meeting the needs at once within a balanced budget with reduced sales tax. There is something to be said that, you know, our departments have done well to really look at what their needs are opposed to their wants to ensure that we keep a structurally balanced budget. Not only are sales taxes kind of flattening, if you will, but our availability of outside resources in the way of federal and state grants is also diminishing. There is even, I thought about it about halfway up today. I think I do have a candy machine and I'm going to make you guys start to pay for your own candy. Symbolizes tighten and a belt, which is okay from time to time. There will be a red line when we get to the draft budget at this point, mainly on capitals. Philip and I have really made sure that operationally, we're in a good spot. Still have some available funds for capital projects while not ignoring the needs. And so I think we're in a good spot going into the draft budget. As far as the departments dispersed across multiple aging facilities, we have six facilities spread out. It's just kind of one of those that keep on the radar. Continued increase in cost of insurance and other expenditures. We continue to evaluate potential alternatives to that. Diligence in increasing water resource capacity. And then desire to improve multimodal opportunities, increase connectivity. And so some of those things that are kind of a little bit more overarching, that impact multiple departments are kind of fall off onto our plate. As far as, you know, we're talking water and water capacity, Joel is a huge aspect in that. And myself, next year allocate money for the Bray Allen to go through the water court for change case application. Transportation master plan is in need of re-revamp or maybe just start over and do it. We do have a single audit potential again next year. 2026 election will be different. It'll be facilitated through the county clerk in November. So an opportunity to learn in my eyes, so excited about that. Conwood Lake did get pushed to 2026, we'll carry that project over. And then some considered efforts for Steel Drive, still got Arizona Street at the back of our mind. Put some money towards that, then website accessibility requirements. So a lot to it. There's a lot of moving parts. Next step in the process will be a draft budget. Encourage you to kind of take a look at it. We'll kind of identify where that red line is, priorities within the different departments, trying to be as equitable as possible across the organization while meeting the needs. And we'll take a look at, you know, the projects and how do they tie back to the comp plan so we can start to show some progress there. And then once that draft budget's out to you guys at the public hearings and we'll talk about it every meeting until December. Any questions on, I guess, my side or kind of holistic? Appreciate the time. We've been in the regular meeting to not feel rushed and we didn't need a little bit of extra time. But again, I think that I personally think it's amazing to see the diversity in one room through one presentation. So, yeah, thanks for all the support and yeah, let's see it. Here we go.
I'm not going to read through those tracks.
So pretty.
We spend money in different ways and it forms a pie. And you can take pieces of the pie and see.
Can't we make it a bigger pie?
How do we make the pie?
Yeah, no, I, I think that wraps up our, our part here unless there's any questions or any, hey, we'd love to see some of the numbers shown in a specific way. You know, we can, we can always do that, but next meeting we'll see a lot of details.
So and you're saying that inflation has eased up?
Well, yeah, I mean, we live in this world, right? So we were dependent on what's going on there. And at the beginning of the budget, inflation was down. And over the last three months, it's, it's, it's crept back up. So what we've done is we've, we've been, mainly that impacts our pay plan. And we try to make sure that our cost of living adjustment is, it keeps up with, with the inflation factor that we look at. Most other things now, we, we're getting accurate, you know, latest numbers on things like insurance, things like that. So we, we don't have escalators typically on those things. We actually have quotes and rules and things like that. So, so yeah, it's, it's, it's good, it's crept backed up closer to three, three percent year on year. So.
Yeah, and that, you know, as we were talking about with the sales tax, with the inflation, you know, the inflation is pushing the sales tax revenue higher than it would be if we had zero inflation.
Correct.
In effect, you see a pretty flat trend.
Absolutely. Yeah. At the same time, we, I don't know, I feel pretty optimistic with what, how the draft budget looks right now. Taking into much of the things you've heard tonight. So it's not all doom and gloom. We, we've set ourselves up with good fund balances and long-term planning. So I, I think you all have been pleased with the, the first draft.
Great.
Will the salary, salary wage increases show, I know that you were comparing to other communities, our size for our pay scale to make sure that we're in line. Are we in line doing the improve?
We have picked a couple of spots in our pay plan where we need to improve more. If that answers the question. So we, we don't look at it as a flat across the board. We, I mean, we do, but then we go department, department by department, and then we look at specific positions. Okay.
Good, good job.
Thanks.
Okay, let's continue on until we get to, before the executive session, we'll have a break. So the reconstruction agreement for the Whipple Bridge. Been waiting for this for a while.
Yes, we have. Yeah, I went into kind of all of the details, kind of memoed there. But a quick summary is that the Whipple Bridge was installed over the Arkansas River in 1991. Over, you know, getting close to 35 years old at this point. The bridge is still structurally sound, but it does still need upgrades of the decking just for longevity and usability of the feature. Again, the long history of the poetic grant that we originally applied for in 2022 is in my report there. But long story short, we were finally approved in June and contracted to begin working on the projects listed in that grant in September. So overall, the grant and town match are $109,750. And those projects being the Whipple Bridge decking replacement, boat house bathroom renovations, rock and roll trail rehabilitation and boat ramp improvements. So the $109,000 dispersed throughout those four projects. But since we began discussing this grant opportunity and combining these projects into the grant opportunity, the Whipple Bridge decking has definitely been the highest priority. We received three proposals from qualified contractors and our top rated proposal from all who scored. And our top rated proposal from all who scored them was this LM Kirsten Construction Company. They have an extensive history of bridge projects, which you can see in their proposal in the packet as well. So the overall cost of the materials and labor for the decking replacement is fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eleven cents. It is over what we estimated for the project, being that our estimate was a few years ago. And we did estimate, estimate around forty-four thousand dollars. But being that all of these projects are tied together kind of in one grant and in one budget line item. Basically, kind of what that means is just we'll have a little bit less for another, a different project, which we've identified as the Rock and Roll Trail. As we were budgeting through for this grant, we kind of planned for, we had definite costs for every project. And then basically the remainder allocated to the Rock and Roll Trail. But we just discussed the budget and you guys will also see further funding and grant opportunities for the Rock and Roll Trail in twenty twenty-six as a potential budget item. But yeah, being that there's fourteen thousand dollars less for that, that project still be, there would still be about twenty-three thousand dollars available to put in work on the Rock and Roll Trail. We are on, sorry, just trying to get my dates right. On September twelfth, we notified the contractor of the intent to award. And in the, the meantime, we've been working on, working through issues about the materials and the lead time. So there is a pretty long lead time to get the treated lumber of the size that we need for the bridge decking. But we feel like we've identified the material that we need. Unfortunately, just gonna take a little bit longer to get here. So it's about an eight-week lead time to get the, the treated Douglas fir that we're looking for here into town. But we evaluated a few other options as well and we still want to stick with that original material that the current decking is constructed of. So all of that to say, all of the funds for this project are available in the budget. And yeah, staff recommends a motion to approve, approve of amendments or deny the construction contract.
I have a question for you on the materials. If there's a price increase in the materials by the time you are able to receive them, is it our, our cost? Or what happens with that?
That's a good question. I, I, I believe, I mean, I believe if we entered into the contract, we would be locked into that price. We would still need the signature of the contractor. However, all the materials that we're looking at, the price difference is pretty negligible. So we should be covered just because, yeah, regardless of what material we go with, it's about the same cost.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Shane? Would someone like?
Resolution sixty-five.
So I have Rice and Stern. Need a roll call on this?
Twenty-five thousand, yeah.
Okay. What'd you call the roll?
Yes.
Trusty Rosenhour.
Yes.
Trusty Rice.
Yes.
Trusty Rome.
Yes.
Trusty Stern.
Yes.
And Trusty Swisher.
Yes.
Right, the motion passes. And we can get going on the bridge. So the last item in our business items is the an item in regard to Proposition one twenty-three, funding opportunities. Does this go back to you, Marika?
Yes. I promise this will be quick. So I mentioned this in my budget presentation, but yesterday staff submitted an application for a local capacity grant through DOLA. And this would help support our affordable housing initiatives through providing expedited review, providing online permitting, which will support expedited review and then really bringing in that consultant that specializes in the affordable housing to audit our code. You know, it's really unique. I think our housing challenges here are unique in Chaffey County and then our code is form-based. And so really looking at ways like potentially reducing parking or open space requirements. If there's fee flexibility, other inclusionary housing options. Got a lot of amazing feedback through the comprehensive plan, but we also recognize this is an opportunity to really have you know, intentional feedback from the folks that we seek to serve with affordable housing. And so really making sure that we're talking to our teachers and our parents and our service workers and the restaurant industry and, and lodging industries to understand that and, and get feedback from them, as well as our development community. I think we want to certainly propose incentives that developers will take advantage of. And so what's going to get us there? By the end of this year, we will be, we will hopefully have adopted a ninety-day expedited review timeline for affordable housing. And then I think that the last component of this that isn't mentioned in here is hopefully with in conjunction with the county and our other area municipalities, we will be submitting a rural resort petition. And what that is, is an income petition to allow us to apply for higher levels of AMI. So right now, DOLA says for an apartment to be affordable, it has to be at sixty percent AMI. And for ownership to be affordable, it has to be at a hundred percent AMI. And as we heard during public comment, it is very hard to achieve development at those costs right now. And because those are our benchmarks, the, the funding stops at those thresholds. And so if we're looking at something like a hundred and twenty percent AMI or even lower AMIs than sixty percent, we're, we're kind of stuck right now because of our rural resort designation. So that income petition is a really important component into next year. And hopefully through this grant, it will set us up for success. But we kind of, anything that we could think of at this point that would help make us successful into next year, we submitted. I'm feeling really positive about the application. We had a really great meeting with DOLA. So I am before you this evening, asking if the board would consider a motion to approve, approve of amendments or deny Resolution number sixty-six. Without the resolution, our grant application will be deemed incomplete. And so we would have to withdraw it at this time. So if there are any questions, I would be happy to answer those.
Questions for planning?
Not necessarily to do with the grant. Always way to go financial monitoring. But the rural resort status, where, where last I heard that they were looking into that designation from the county level?
They were, but at this point, what's going to be required is an updated housing needs assessment. So it is going to be a bit of a, kind of a sequential thing. Now, the current housing needs assessment one was just kind of a, an update to the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen one. And so that full redo needs to be completed. And that way it's fresh enough to kind of turn back around and submit for rural resort petition. When we get to that point, there might be something to be said that we do it individually as both, opposed to county, countywide. We'll evaluate that once the numbers come back through the housing needs assessment, so.
And can you remind me when we, what the ETAs on the housing needs assessment completion?
Talking to Gina today, they're trying to put some lever, or some pressure, pressure on who that's gonna be. I think it kind of got bogged down with the executive director transition or I guess hiring process. The county, from my understanding, was going to take the lead and then they are still going to be the fiscal agent, but kind of write that grant over to the housing authority for the housing authority to take the lead on that. So talked about it today and asked somebody that, that has the ability to apply pressure to apply pressure.
Thank you. That's helpful because I know we're all anxiously awaiting that. It'll be helpful for a lot of projects. And Marika, just to make sure I understand, the grant, because AMI is tricky, right? We're seeing a big need for that under sixty percent. And this would also assist in that as well, not just if somebody wanted to build over a hundred. So I think what a hundred percent AMI for Chaffey County is like a hundred and twenty, or?
I think it's like seventy-five.
Yeah. Yeah, so good to know that it'll help the under sixty percent. Thank you. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution sixty-six second.
So we have Pike and Rosenhour. Vote in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Do we need a roll call vote on that one too?
No.
Okay. All right, good. The motion passes. Great. Now we're going to go into trustee staff interaction. And I have something I'd like for y'all to think about over the next little while. Maybe we'll, I'll say what I have to say and then you can speak to that or speak to other things and then we'll come back and make some kind of a decision on this. I feel like that, that the people who are objecting to are eliminating the not, not allowing licenses for the waiting list. I think that that is a mistake. I, I would prefer that we were allowing the people who are on the waiting list choose, you know, the first four, the first six, the first nine, whatever approach we want to take on that. But I feel like it's, in a way, it's a question of how do we want to use our energy? And I think everybody in this, on this board and, and the staff, everyone's pretty well maxed out. And I don't feel like it's worthwhile to spend, you know, months fighting about this. And I feel like, you know, they, the people who are on that waiting list will want to fight about it and will fight back and everybody will use up all their energy. And I feel like we have done, you know, an amazing job of being able to work together as a, as a board and as a town. And, you know, even Marika has said, you know, that she, she's walked in here and felt like it's a breath of fresh air compared to the way, you know, some, some boards behave. And so that's, that's my feeling about it. And that, after you've had a chance to think about it and make whatever comments you want to make, let's make a choice, either yes or no, that we're going to discuss this at a later meeting. It, it can't be, we can't make a change, we can't make a motion and a change without it being a business item. So it'll have to be deferred to a later meeting. Does that sound correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions about my position?
I, I support your position. Mayor Fett, and I appreciate you bringing that to us. And, you know, I would add further, if we were to revisit this, I would, I would be curious if statements we heard tonight are correct. You know, are there licenses available now pursuant to the current code? Because I, I heard that stated today. So I don't know if that's true or not, but I do know that there's a gap amount of time between us passing the ordinance and it taking effect. And I think that the reason there is a gap there is to address things like what are happening right now. So I'm, I'm in support of, of bringing this back and discussing it as a business item.
Okay. Does anyone want to speak to it now or?
I have a question.
Yes.
So it seems to me like the, most of the complaints we've heard are about the two-year waiting list or the two-year period required to wait. So are you recommending that everybody on the waitlist, regardless of whether they're in R1 zoning? Or have, or if there's a current space under the existing six percent cap? Are you saying like essentially, I guess I'm, so for people on the waitlist, and it passed and they were still on the waitlist? I guess I'm confused about the current, the one nineteen cap and if you want to expand that to one twenty-five? Or if you want to keep it under the current six percent cap?
Well, the recalculation, if you go from the six percent would be that there would be a hundred and twenty-eight licenses available next year, two thousand twenty-six. Right? I mean, they don't take effect immediately. Because this is two thousand twenty-five and that calculation was made in November or October last year, right?
We do the calculation, we take the housing count on August thirty-first and we post those numbers on September fifteenth to be in compliance with the ordinance. And in the past, that's what drove how many licenses were available. Or, or Tormerda license out of county or entity.
For the next year.
For the next year. And those licenses start getting issued November fifteenth. Yeah, for the next year.
And is the number that was posted on September fifteenth, would it have been one twenty-eight?
One twenty-eight.
Is that with, with the restrictions, with the removal of the deed restricted units and things like that, that was also part of that?
It's not changing that definition.
Okay. So it's just totally minus.
Yeah, the ordinance itself basically can remain the same. It's just an amendment that would basically address those on the waitlist only. And then whatever is remaining, even the number can remain the same. The one nineteen and the requirements the board voted on can remain the same going forward. It really can just dive into just addressing waitlist only.
Yes. I, I suggest, I know you mentioned the, some of the comments we've heard are intending to fight us on this. And also point out that a lot of those comments are coming from folks who are not BV residents. I don't mean that to be any slight, but there is an appetite for some sort of opposition. I think I would prefer to have some conversation with our attorney as to the merits of that fight. Understand what the likelihood of success is and what our liabilities are if there is a fight. I would, and that's probably more of a executive session question with Jeff. Where are, you know, what are our, what are the facts? What, what are the, what are the possibilities of fight? What arguments could they bring? What are our liabilities? I'd like for us to understand that first before we rush to revisit a decision.
We could arrange with Jeff to have an executive session next time we meet. And then have this discussion the following.
And, and then, yeah, and then we could say, depending on the results of that advice from attorney, then it may or may not be a business item. But I, I would, I think it'd be premature to say that's a business item now without receiving some advice.
I think we could do that, right, with Jeff?
Are you happy to do that?
Because then you could advise us and then we can decide. That would make me happy.
I'm telling Jeff.
I know that's important to you.
Yeah, so I can just be ready to discuss it with you in this executive, next meeting and executive session.
Okay. So that would be the second Tuesday in, in October.
I won't be here on the second, just doesn't matter. I think she said on October second.
What, what is the date of our next, what, what is the date of the next meeting?
Okay, yeah, the second of October, I get it, okay. I will be here on the fifth.
Okay. So does that, does that at least move it a little forward?
It does for me, I mean, you know, everybody can think about what they want to. What's your, what's your chosen outcome, but, but I think that you can give us some good advice. Okay, Chris?
Um, that was it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Cindy?
The presentation that we got um, at our last meeting that you gave us the letter at the very end um, for the, you know, Vista Sportsman Club. The, the youth shooting is, I think it goes with the comp plan. I think it's a valuable um, event for our younger people. And it teaches them respect and safety. It's just not go out there and shoot up a bunch of targets. But in the letter that he had sent to us, they are trying to apply for grants to fix the range up. And they would need to know um, within the next month or two, I believe if they could extend their lease on the sporting range. Because for the grants they're applying for, um, their chance of getting a, a grant would be so much higher if they had a lease on the property for a longer term than ten years. And it would benefit the town to have the town shooting range fixed up. Um, and, and it would put a substantial amount of money in it. And we, the town wouldn't have to try and do something with the Chi- Chicago Ranch Development. So I am interested in having him come back. And it would be like a half hour work session to give him to present to us. So he has a lot more than three minutes to explain to us what he has planned. And I was wondering if you guys would be interested in getting him in um, work session in the near future. So if they can apply for these grants and get them, that it would, they could benefit from it. So I guess what I'm asking for is, could we expedite a half hour work session before a board meeting to listen to his presentation?
Um, it seems like maybe Shane, Shane would, you'd be, you'd want to be involved in something like that, I would think. But.
I definitely want to be involved in the conversation, but um, Brian executed the, the lease agreement with them the last go around.
Yeah, and I will say that lease, current lease is a ten-year lease with another ten-year renewal plus another ten-year renewal. So it's written in a way that it's actually can be viewed more as a thirty-year lease. The same um, pitch, if you will, was uh, the same conversation that was had in twenty twenty-three. At that time, they were pursuing a CPW grant. And we actually inquired with CPW and said, you know, here's the lease. As you can see, it has two ten-year renewals. Is this sufficient for um, your guys' needs from a granting perspective? And they said, oh yeah, that's plenty. Uh, so um, we certainly had the discussion. Got some of that context behind it.
So essentially he has a forty-year lease right now and he's asking for a hundred-year lease. You know, we're all be dead, way dead in a hundred years.
Wow.
I'm sorry, ten, I mean, that's ten about to a sale, you know, or uh, a gift for, you know, no, I mean, there's no compensation, right? We get, we don't get a lease payment.
Right.
It's just kind of a right to use the property. And I think what we're saying is that we'll probably not, not have a problem if he wants to do a forty-year lease. Is that correct? I mean, or am I overstating that?
It's a long time, you know, part of the ten years is kind of an automatic renewal. It identifies the criteria for renewal, but it gives a bit of a ten-year check-in. Um, as municipality to say, yeah, we're still here, still in favor of this. Um, holds them to a certain standard to come back during that time period and say, here's the efforts we've made to stay in compliance and um, blood mitigation and all that kind of stuff, so. I don't know, it's written in a way where it requires the renewal, but that perhaps a better structure than just a blanket forty years. Definitely pulls up the radar.
I have just one that I had. Shane, would it be appropriate for them to come to the REC advisory board and, and work with them on any changes and needs they have out at their, at their location?
I think that, that for sure. And I think additionally, I mean, potentially pursuing the grant opportunity with them. I don't know if that would solve the issue if we were a co-applicant. Um, I, I haven't heard about this project until now, so um, I, I'd definitely be welcome to meeting with them and just exploring the options.
So is, is the better route for them back to this board via the REC advisory board? A presentation and a recommendation from the REC advisory board?
Well, I don't know. I was just going for a work session so that we could hear the, what he has to offer. What is in this letter and the few minutes that I spoke to the gentleman. The improvements to the gun range has something to do with the way I don't belong to the Sportsman Club. The way that it is designed and what they were gonna do would make the gun range quieter and safer for the surrounding area. And so me trying to present his case right now is not a benefit to him. I want to gain more information.
Yeah, it just, it gets awkward sometimes when we start getting the onesie twosie things in here. You know, where everybody have a pitch, but then we don't get to see it in terms of the whole category of expenditure. I like the idea of the REC board and then, and then you include it within your, you know, your totals and let us know about it. And they could certainly give us more detail if he wants, in the meantime. Um, because you know, we don't really have any, there's nothing really that specific here, as you just said. Would that work for you? Because if we do a work session, we can't make a decision anyway, you know, we.
Exactly, but how does he present to us with, to get longer than three minutes? Is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, well, and I'm saying that the process is probably to go through the REC advisory board and, and have Shane report in to us about it.
Okay.
But as to whether they continue to have a nice long-term lease, I think that's probably something we would agree to. Just with these extension periods.
Yeah, Shane and I can certainly reach out to him if you're at a meeting and just feel about a little bit more of what he really needs. If he needs more time to pitch it, or is it something that um, we can facilitate easy enough? And you know, REC board and we can update you and if, you know, based on those recommendations, a business item. Rather than a work session, we've kind of got a, kind of a designated one-hour block makes it difficult. And then at that time, then he can actually make a decision, seem reasonable.
Okay, because I do think it benefits. I think that their program is, it goes along with the Sportsman Club, but it also is a different type of activity for our youth that aren't necessarily, we tend to have activities for those that excel athletically.
Yeah.
But we don't have tons of stuff for the kids that don't.
Yeah, and I think he's done really well with, with uh, coaching the kids, particularly girls. The girls are better shooters than the guys, from what I've heard.
We can help him get where he needs to be for grant applications, for sure.
Okay. And his, his phone number isn't on here, but would you contact him? Or do I need to figure out how to contact him to tell him to go to the REC board?
We can tag him, see if you can, see what you can figure out. I'll try to track him down as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Um, Marika, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Nothing more for me.
Go, Brian?
Parents' Board is looking for a letter of support associated with their interior rehab for their electrical. There's a copy in front of you, probably buried now, but uh, look for a motion to authorize marriage and find that. Has to do with the interior electrical improvements that the town contributed ten thousand towards the design out. So no additional financial contribution beyond that, just a letter of support.
So anybody want to make a motion in regard to that?
I move we ask the mayor to sign the letter of support.
I will second.
Okay, so we have Rice and Hike, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, I'm gonna sign the letter. Evan? Hi.
Hello. I'm good.
Uh, Andrew?
Nothing.
Maggie?
I have nothing this evening.
Lika?
Nothing for me, thank you.
One thing, alright, nothing, it's a good thing. Uh, Garner is gonna be at Public Works on Saturday, seven fifty-five, Craig Drive. Electronics, hosting electronics recycling from ninety until one P M on Saturday, Saturday, so. Heads up, uh, check out the website if you didn't, check out my BV if you forget to go to the website.
For electronics.
Electronics, you, you waste him.
Great.
Good question on that. Does that include like, is so much disposal for a computer and blah, blah, blah? What about all the wiring that goes with computer? Is that?
It's fine, yeah, the.
That would be included?
Like, like ours, they throw it in the charge forwards, the TV screens, the, the glasses, LED monitors. Uh, glass screen monitors, sorry, so.
Yes, definitely, definitely cords and stuff like that.
Well, I have nothing. John Drew?
Uh, just want to say thank you to Jeff Parker and his team, also Dean and Grant with Code Enforcement. Navigate some tricky um, compliance issue with some, some lease termination. So I'm getting educated on that and everybody's been a big help.
Great. Chief?
Nothing, thank you.
Shane?
Nothing else.
Alright, okay, media? Jeff?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. Did I leave anyone out? Okay, great. Well, that um, next we will go into an executive session. Okay, so um, someone needs to make this motion.
Let me read your blurb first before asking for a motion.
This will be an executive session to hold a conference with the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B concerning conflicts of interest. So um, I will want somebody to make this motion. And the motion is, I move that the Board of Trustees enter into executive session to hold a conference with the town's attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to Colorado Revised Statute twenty-four dash six dash four two four B.
I make that mention, I'll second.
Concerning conflicts of interest. Did you say you made the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, Rosenhour and Hike. You need to have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Okay, we have a vote to go into executive session. So we will now take a little break.